The planning board from July 16, 2024 to order. First item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing from June 18th for 20 Garden Street. Warren's not here, did you, you wanted to say something? Or do you wanna?
I think, I'm pretty sure Warren submitted a document in response.
He submitted some documents, yeah, just the other day we had a document.
I think his document as far as, as far as on cover.
Okay, then.
So does the board have any comments on that document from Warren?
I think the most important stuff that he said was that, if I can get that document, was that he intends to submit additional material for consideration for the August 6th meeting, including an existing conditions demolition plan, construction sequencing and erosion sediment control plan, and a series of updated sheets, submission sheets.
So Mr. Chair, if the board feels comfortable at this time, you can close the public hearing. However, you would just table the application and the project to the August 6th meeting.
Okay.
I've been part of this, I'm sorry, but if there's additional material coming in, we leave the public hearing open just in case.
That is, that is up to the board's decision. The county has already weighed in. That document was circulated. The only one who has not seen Warren's letter yet is the engineer from Ty and Bond. I was gonna share that document with that engineer based on what the board decided. If you guys feel more comfortable sticking with the process of keeping the public hearing open, you can continue it to August 6th.
Yes, we should do that.
That is your decision.
Warren's here and we get response with Ty and Bond. I don't think we had any major problems with the questions for Warren, which he has answered. If I have Bond, you can look at it and if everything looks okay, you know, then we can deal with it on 6th. Do you want a motion for that?
No.
Okay.
John, here's a question.
Hi. I watched the tapes of the previous meetings on this, trying to catch up. And the only point that I thought I might emphasize since you're here, through Warren, is I thought Darren made a really good point about the possibility of differentiating that corner building from the one next to it, so it doesn't look like sort of one big uniform plaza, and it looks more like buildings as it was done than were incrementally put together. And so if there was some architectural changes or color variations or something for the corner building that would differentiate it from the building next to it, I think it would actually improve the complex.
Yeah, John, he did submit that. If you look at his drawing, he submitted, what he did is delineated the building to my Wagon proper line.
We did?
Yeah, he did.
Um, well, let's take a look.
Think about colors too, because I think if it was just a shade off or something, it might be, that would be my, I thought Darren made a good point of that.
In the shade look, the 20 yards?
Yes.
Just the colors of the corner building versus the one, sort of the salvage.
Oh, you mean the facade?
Yes.
Excellent.
I can bring that up, hold on.
I don't know how the peoples feel about that, but I thought it was a good point.
Yes, it was. Oh, it was a good, yeah. It scrolled, scrolled out.
I have a, I have a question.
It wasn't going there.
Is a basement being constructed in that building?
Is there going to be a basement? Yes. As far as, as far as I know, mine is supposed to be the whole mechanical basement. Right now, there's just kind of, it, then all this to heat or?
Reason I bring that up is 35 years ago, when it went from a single family home to a plaza, Bia and the other restaurant in there was originally supposed to be on a slab. And after he got a building permit, Ulrich decided he was gonna put a basement in, and he dug it up, and when he dug it up, the water table was six feet deep, and then all the construction crew stirred up the water and then got brought into the parking lot, and the parking lot filled up with water, I would say about that deep, and.
I remember that.
Yeah, you have, you have put in the.
Drainage system.
The drainage system that he originally was supposed to have put in, and he refused to do. So I'm not saying there could be a problem, I'm just saying there was a problem 35 years ago, you know, be aware of.
That's a good point, yeah. And I'm not saying there are definitely issues, but I have to discuss with Warren to see exactly.
Yep. John, to answer your question, these are the elevations shown at the last meeting that Aaron made the comment on.
Right.
And you can see, I guess he put like a horizontal thing here to break up the mass of the plane there, and it's.
He had two roof lines from Warren, and this is kind of a channel going through copper roofing.
Right, that, that was one of the things Darren asked for, is if you put a copper flashing in the valley of the two roofs, it would distinguish them.
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that maybe you could think about, let's like color variation or something else for this new building, it's gonna get resided, so that it, because right now, this sort of whole thing looks like a suburban shopping plaza in.
Yeah, I think that's actually a great idea, John.
I don't think you necessarily need to change anything else on the building.
All right, so we're gonna hear from Warren and deal with all the questions, see if it's okay on 6th. Okay, so now we're going to start the public hearing on 6 Mulberry Street with the certificate of removal, partial demolition of the store building, 6 Mulberry Street, the main building. We want to make a short presentation to the public. If people sign, you wanna speak, you can, there's a little sign in sheet there, you put that up, Brian.
So we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah. Okay. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I do.
Second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we're making a short, a lot of people have seen this already, you can make a short presentation, aye.
Sure, so the, the kind of summary of the demolition proposal is to demolish the annex which sits on the northern facade of the building, and half of the gym which sits in the western portion of the lot. The western portion being the back of the lot, not, not the very facade facing the area. The reasoning behind the demolition of those areas is because the building as it is is roughly 19,000, nearly 20,000 to 30,000. And adaptive reusing that for a, for the unit count, bedroom count that septic will support would mean that we would have units that would be very large, unmarketable, we wouldn't be able to change bedroom counts, we'd be increasing square footage units in living, kitchen, dining areas, and end up with 3,000 square foot, two bedrooms. That's not really a very multiple and useful type of unit for the village, arguably for anyone in some cases, but anyway, that's, that's not an argument. So that, so that has some organizational and sort of functional reasoning. We feel that, that the proposed portions of the demolition also really keep the character and feeling of the building. It may change its presentation on Mulberry Street, which is its primary facade. In fact, demolishing the annex, we argue, the annex is a little bit of an add-on, not a little bit, a total add-on, in a tectonic that is not consistent with the construction of the building. It does not date from the construction of the building, it's, it's a year, decades later. And so its removal in fact would be improving, I think, the intent and contextual nature of the building and its historical level greatness. And this is one of the questions that, that came up, in addition to needing to demolish half of the gym to reduce square footage and to make one more septic, was what is the net impact on the street view, the streetscape for neighbors, both direct neighbors as well as the neighborhood, streetwalkers walking their dogs, kind of back to school, et cetera, et cetera. It's important, I think, in that context to keep in mind that the proposal is not, is part of a five lot subdivision that we will be talking about perhaps a little later in this meeting. So there are four single family homes, two on South Street, one on the corner of South and Mulberry, one on South Proper, and then one on East Market and Mulberry, and one on, on Mulberry Proper. Those sort of bookend this building. They create a kind of streetscape in a context that also is important when we consider the demolition, because they mask in a large part what would be unseen now, or what would have been seen if, if it hadn't been, if it hadn't been demolished. In fact, as it is now, the street, the views from, from East Market and the bulk of Mulberry would almost be unchanged, given the way, where that rear of the building that we're proposing demolishing it is, which in this image that Jeff has brought up is the, a third to a half of the parking lot, is not particularly visible, like from a certain angles from East Market or Mulberry. It is visible from South, which has, the entire property has almost no trees on it, there are some trees actually on the north, the western side of South Street. So by demolishing that, that portion of it, and then infilling with the proposed houses, even by the applicant, the Dr. Shepherd being the applicant, or if we sell those lots by, by a new owner who will have to go through the planning board review process and build a contextually Victorian, you know, appropriate house, those views of what is missing or what has been demolished will be minimized to a certain extent. Victorian, am I missing anything? I think, I think so, so it's really for those reasons, leading square footage so that we have appropriate units. So I guess the last thing would be, I was thinking, is that in doing the demolition, we intend to harvest a good amount of the brick, the brick dates to late 19th century, early 20th century from a bricklayer just on the Hudson, yeah, Kingston. We are proposing, and this will all be part of site plan review at a later date, significant facade upgrades and facade detail work for which we would need this brick. Having, having that harvested brick from the demolished portion of the building will really give us a lot of material to sort of knit in the new portion, going for new portions of the construction, so they, they, on day one already be as contextual, they have the same weathering pattern as the existing brick, they'll have the same latina as the existing brick, so it really provides us that.
So to understand, we're doing this in actually four pieces. First piece is the demolition, partial demolition of the Brogan Center, so that's just this part. The subdivision, we'll look at the entire property, and then the third part, we site plan for the Brogan Center, which would just be the Brogan Center, and the fourth part will be down the line, when somebody buys, say, Lot 3, and wants to build a house on it, they would come in one at a time to build a house on the four lots. And any new construction in the historic district is subject to site plan approval by the planning board, so we have to look at what house is gonna look like, what lighting, everything. It'll be four individual site plan reviews of the four lots, a year, two years, whenever this happens down the line. So tonight, the first topic tonight is the demolition permit. If people have comments about the removal of part of the gym, or the cinder block building, the modern building, then we appreciate you coming up and speaking. Well, Brian has a list of, just one person commenting?
It's a very long list, Chair. The first is Victor Britton, 34, South Street.
Another thing we should note maybe is that the seeker on this project has been done, the environmental review has been done, so issues like traffic and, you know, water drainage and septic field necessities and those sorts of things have been covered and decided by the village board, so we're not discussing those sorts of issues tonight. It's sort of limited to the, to the demolition permit and anything related to that.
Yes.
Victor, would you, would you come up here so we will see you and hopefully hear you?
Do you want us to?
No, you're fine.
Put it on that report.
If it was crowded, we'd say three minutes.
We're fine.
Hi.
Am I in the picture?
You're in, very good.
I'm Victor Britton, I live on South Street across the street from the project. Two things that I think relate to the demolition, even if it's obtrusely, one of them is the, the hours of construction, I think, that are proposed in the code, and it felt liberal in terms of the flexibility for, for construction time, so I asked the planning board to review that and consider it in the context of where it's at.
What, remind us what the hours or that the board's.
It's in the village.
Do you know what they are?
I didn't do my homework.
It doesn't say specific hours, refers to the code, it has specific hours elsewhere, I believe.
I believe it's 8:00 AM, it's 8:00 PM.
What days of the week?
Mondays and Fridays.
I thought there was some, are you sure there's nothing?
Uh, look under residential districts.
It overlapped.
Favorit.
Besides, I shall incorporate any practical measures, including the law limited to hours during the day, days of the week, like the structural, submitted, purposeful warning or minimizing the adverse impact. So.
I think we should.
And it leaves it up to us to determine.
Right, indeed, that's what, that's what happened when they didn't want to legislate, is they kicked it to you. So the other thing, you probably remember the letter I wrote about a month ago, is, you know, the, I'm just hoping that the planning board can look at the scope. One of the things that the, that the trustees didn't feel comfortable putting into legislation was anything about the front entrance, and this, this is a building technically, Steve, but this is a building left over, it's an addition to a building that burned down, and so this building has no front door, it has the side entrance on the south side, as you know. And, you know, one of the things that I've been focused on is I want everybody to be consistent and have, have a front entrance at least, or something like that, and not be driving into the back and be sequestered from the neighborhood, so, and I understand it's a difficult building, but I don't feel like any attempt was made to put a front on it, and I think that honors the building. And the reason it's related to demolition is because some of the materials that are gonna be harvested might be used and tried to create that front. So, and I'm talking about Mulberry Street, or even if there was a change to the lot something on South Street, but the fact that the, my neighbors, all these, a lot of my neighbors are not gonna be coming in and out their front door like all my neighbors, they're gonna be, you know, mainly driving in, maybe they'll walk out to the farmer's market. So I'm asking that, that you guys have a lot of responsibility, it's a complicated project, and it's, it's a, you know, once in a generation project for a small village, that you really remember that that building was an addition. And so it's, it's, even though we're trying to preserve it historically, we're trying to adapt it so it fits in, and I'm just asking that that be considered before it's too late. That's all. Okay, and I think it, I think it relates to demolition that way, because some of the materials might be used. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. See, when I asked some questions about our attorney who couldn't be here tonight, he said you have to look at the law for the Buckley Overlake District. This site is not exactly in the village, it falls under its own code. I'm not sure how, I mean, David will be here for the next meeting, how, if it's not specified, it falls under the village code, or it always, because the village code says the front entrance must face the street. The Buckley Overlake District says it may or may not face the street, you have to read that.
In paragraph seven, they gave you the option of having a front entrance with a porch, but if that's impractical, and that's from a site visit, where you saw the interior layout, and he talks a little bit about ADA access, or if it's unnecessary for consistency with historic preservation, instead, there can be a walkway from the street sidewalk to the Buckley Schoolhouse entrance to provide a welcome connection from the street to the building. So when we get to the site plan.
This will be part of site plan, but it's part of something.
You'll see that there, there is like a pedestrian walkway and. Yeah, okay.
Well, you need that for site plan.
Right.
Yes, it's part of site plan, but I think Victor was just bringing it up.
You're not gonna have to make a presentation, it's much more reverent.
Site plan's going to be.
I'd rather not dig into that, because.
No, site plan's gonna be a lot more work than this.
Yeah.
But you will commit to saving as many bricks as you can, so that will be a part of the demolition.
A hundred percent, it's our intention to recycle as much as we possibly can, whether on-site or off.
Yeah, David gave us a tour of the building a couple of weeks ago.
I did, it was fun.
And it's a challenging thing, but where the building is attached, there's a staircase, and there's a lot of the wall, back wall of the school still there, you know, so there won't be that much bricks that after we found the building, because if we walk up and down the stairwell to get into a building, there's walls, a brick that are already intact, so, but we certainly don't want a jagged, you know, broken structure there for a very long time. And there, there will be a total change to it, because right now, there's like a doorway into the building on each floor, and now there's going to be a bunch of windows on each floor of the, of that side of the building. So site plan's gonna totally change it, and when those window holes are made, we figured you might be able to use some of those bricks as well when they open the windows, so we want it to look like it's always been there.
Yeah.
Then as far as the hours of construction, it's a balancing act, because the more you limit the hours, the longer the project stretches out, so it's something for them to work through.
We'll have to look into that, and, yeah. So I was concerned that, you know, we've had only four board members in the last few meetings, a lot of people are on vacation, and I wanted to hold the public hearing open another, till next month, till August 6th, to give anyone on vacation a chance to come back and speak in person if they choose to. But as far as the public hearings, there were like half a dozen public hearings in front of the village board, and I think a lot of these questions were settled when the village board did seeker on this, made determination, so people may have some questions, and we'll talk about that, but I wanted to leave it open for, you know, another couple of weeks, till August 6th, to hear more, the public should they come in again, come back on vacation. Anyone else have any comments to talk about demolition permit as it stands? I mean, Jeff and I live on opposite corners, of course, we're also concerned about, you know, the noise of demolition and dust, and also about asbestos and lead removal that might have to happen to that part of the building that's to be demolished. So I assume that's all part of the regulations that have to be followed for certified lead asbestos removal companies to put that in the building, so, before demolition will be in place.
I have a couple of comments.
Yep.
I haven't been here for the last three meetings, so I'm sort of catching up. And on the demolition permit in particular, you know, I have no issues with demolishing of the northern cinder block portion of the building that comes from a more modern period, and I think it is not helpful to the historic quality of the building. In terms of the partial removal of the rear historic section, as I understand it, and I know you gave some other reasons, but the primary reasons are that you need room for the required parking and for the required septic, the septic system. And the extent of the part of the building that can remain in the back is somewhat determined by the amount of parking and the septic that's required by us and the building itself. Is that more or less correct?
Yeah, that is more or less correct. PSO District has, the village has passed in PSO overlay that there is a maximum number of bedrooms allowed on this, not the Buckley Schoolhouse, but on the 1.44 acres of, we quote, developed in whatever form. So, so we could, to throw out an alternative, we can demolish any of the building, put 31 bedrooms in that building, right, and then have septic located and parking located elsewhere on the 1.44 acres. That would be meeting the letter of the law of PSO Overlake District. However, I would argue, and argue freely, strongly, that that would have a dramatic negative impact on, to some extent, direct neighbors, but more importantly, on creating a urban civic kind of context to the streetscape that is the intent of the proposal. So a rhythm of small Victorian-ish houses, together with preserving and that of using a historic building. So certainly there are alternatives, right, and, and I would be ridiculous for you to argue otherwise, but I believe that the best alternative for the village, the direct neighbors, and the community at large, is along with.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not debating the mix of single family and multifamily. That sets a good context for neighborhood creates transition. But, you know, I think our mandate under the historic preservation law is to preserve as much of the historic building as possible. So taking off the rear portion, which is part of the historic section of the building, is a more difficult choice to us than taking off the cinder block section of the building.
True.
And it seems to me how far you have to take off is somewhat determined by the size of the septic field requirement in the back, because the parking, you're gonna have to have two days of parking back there under any circumstance, so that's sort of a fixed in state, and then whatever's left has to fit the septic system.
To support the, whose number of bedrooms.
Right.
That are being allocated in the building.
So what I'm asking for is more information about the sizing of that septic system in the back, because it seems what you have shown is a little bit inconsistent, and it just raises questions to me, because you have a primary field and a secondary field, which are different sizes, and.
I mean, I'm more than happy to go back to Brian Hilton Brand and give you all the information.
Okay.
He ran all the numbers, and he did, I'm not, I'm an architect, I'm definitely not a civil engineer, but I will get Brian.
One thing I would like out of your interview, whoever, is what the state NGS requirements for septic fields, what is the separation property line, what is the size of the septic field required for each one, you know, the sort of minimum size? Is there a necessary separation between the primary and the secondary? How far does it have to be from a single family home, how far does it have to be from a garage? All those sort of details will be helpful to us, so that we can determine whether the septic fields are as efficient as they can be, so that the maximal amount of building in the back can be preserved, if possible. Yep, that was, the other thing is, there's photos here that represent how much of the building is gonna be demolished, and it seems to me the one that from, it shows the building from the south side is inaccurate, because it shows that you're taking off the back two-thirds of the lower section of the building, the rear section. Yes.
This one?
Yes. And actually, at least from the elevations, it appears to be you're taking off the entire rear section, you're just putting back.
What I represented is that we're taking off half the gym. The gym is this space, that is the current gym.
Yes.
And that shaded area is the shaded area that is being demolished, 50% roughly, meaning five or six inches of the gym.
You're also demolishing that section.
The kitchen and the gym, so it's two-thirds of the brick mass wall.
Yeah, correct, yes, the kitchen and the gym. The kitchen's approximately nine and a half feet deep, and the gym is roughly, what?
But what I'm suggesting is that.
Are you talking about this portion here?
Yes, that has to come down, or it has to be replaced, because that's where your main doorway is, that's where your rails are.
Correct.
So essentially, you're gonna take that down and replace it, or at the very least from our perspective, which is. Or at very least from our perspective, which is we need to preserve the exterior of the historic building, it's going to be dramatically changed to the point where it's completely demolished.
I mean, look, I can't speak to how you would characterize that. We are also putting eight new windows in this, more than that, southern facade and northern facade. Would you characterize that as also we're proposing demolishing the northern and southern facades? I don't really know. Like, I mean, I can't.
That section is being completely renovated.
It's not coming down.
Yeah, the entrance is staying exactly where it is. That opening, that entrance is not changed. I mean, it's changing, we're changing doors and whatnot, obviously.
It's much different. It's recessed. It's, and there's a ramp configured in that portion of the building.
All, all there is, but that ramp is configured exterior. We're not demolishing any portion of the building to accommodate that ramp.
David, you're talking about this entrance or remain?
Correct.
So for those of you that are familiar with the gym, you might have been in there. This is the gym.
Including the kitchen gym, you're including the kitchen.
The stage and all that stuff. So, and you'll notice doors on both sides here. So this part, this whole thing is the gym. The kitchen's in the back, right? So the demolition would be just off the doors on here from here. So about half of the gym would be coming off, that you'd say. And to John's point, this area behind here would then be parking and above there presumably a Dutchess County Code compliance septic system with sufficient.
And I guess, John, to your point, that there's two ramps. There's a ramp on the southern side, the southern side, and then there's a ramp on the western side. So you are right, right? The demolished part of that gym, the shaded area, will allow for the, a new ramp will be put in where that shaded area is. But I'm not demolishing any additional portion of the building to accommodate that ramp. Is that, am I answering the question or are you, do you respect me?
Yeah, I guess I am. But those walls, these walls are existing and they'll be maintained, is what you're saying.
That wall right now isn't existing, right?
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Because when I cut that off, I have to fill it in, right?
But this portion, you're saying, is existing. It seems this is all being reconfigured.
It is being, it is being reconfigured as a hallway and a bike room. But right now, and referring to the whole floor of the gym as we reviewed when we were together during one of those, we're able to make that.
That will be raised up.
Will be raised up. So in that sense, the interior.
It just seems that that section of the building is in all intents being demolished and reconfigured.
I mean, internally more so than externally.
But anyway, okay. Just I wanted everybody to recognize that that, it's not, that portion of the building is not being maintained.
Right, right.
It's being completely reconfigured. And we all have.
No, nothing is being completely reconfigured, right?
Except for the east, east facade.
No, but in terms of its interior, there is no configured, there's no interior portion of the building that we're putting.
Except on the ground floor.
Floor plates perhaps, right? But I'm talking about divisions, plumbing.
Okay.
Materiality, all sorts of things.
For us, it's the exterior of the building. And it seems to me that was reconfigured enough that I would say that portion is being demolished as well.
I mean, I.
But I.
Are you thinking of two windows or is it two windows?
I mean, no configuration would be different.
Yeah. All right, just, just so people are aware of that, that, that sort of red is maybe not including all the changes that are being made.
So it begs, to me, it begs the question that, as, as we go forward with the discussion on the application for partial demolition, assuming that this is the line of demolition, the big assumption is that an other facade will be built here.
Right.
Right? And what David has mentioned is their current plan or the, their desired plan would call for a scissored ramp to be here outside of it. But I think that's actually part of site plan.
Right.
So does this mean then that for us to move ahead and after we get public comments, decide acceptance or, you know, denial of conditions or whatever, that the key assumption is this is the line of demolition and that there will be a new facade built here? That we can't just leave it open.
Okay.
I think, I don't think that's the question. The question was, if I'm understanding correctly, is that entryway being changed so significantly that it rises to the level of a de facto demolition? But that's something I think we can deal with during site plan review as well. I mean, the walls are not being demolished as part of this particular demolition permit. So if, if later on it comes up that you think another layer of review is needed, help me deal with that. But we can't even get to that level of design until we know what the box we're dealing with is.
Okay. The final point I wanted to make about demolition was that, it should be clear, and I think we talked, or talked about this before, is that if there's going to be an approval for demolition removal permit, it would be contingent on the subsequent approval of the subdivision in site plan. Because to a certain degree, all of these things are related. And if the site plan gets changed to a new entrance, for instance, that could affect the demolition plan. And so we would have to go back and revisit that or whatever.
So that was sort of established.
Yes, I was just making.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
See, part of the ramps on both two sides of the building, I don't know if you've been in the Burilly Building and visited a doctor there or been in Village Green and the Parlor Building off of Route 9. This is like those buildings. It has no first floor. You come down, you go to the first floor, up to go to the second floor and way up to go to the third floor. Village Green does that, the Burilly Building doctors does that. It's an odd anti-handicap design of a building and we have to deal with that. And these ramps, I'm not sure what you could do with the ramp because you can't walk in. No one with a wheelchair could get in the building unless you have these ramps. Because they're going to be like, the existing open is going to be, there's going to be like a dozen steps to get up that way unless you come up the ramp. And you can't get downstairs either. An elevator wouldn't even help because you'd still be landing on half floors. I don't know, we have to talk about that.
Now, I think that's one of the hardest problems to deal with with this building is, it's, you know, it seems to me you're going to need ADA compliant ramps, but they take up a lot of facade. They have a lot of new material on the exterior of the building that ideally you don't want to see on a historic building. But I'm not sure if there's better solutions than what you're calling.
We may have a little fort to, you know, put in discussion on how to get into that.
Yeah.
Definitely has, I definitely thought more about it.
Yeah. I have a whole bunch of other points, but they're not related specifically to demolition. So I'll hold on those until at least we're finished with this segment. Because I think I should catch up with everybody and get people, put people on notice what, some of the ideas that I've been making about.
Okay, thank you, John. So we're going to hold this over to August 6th.
That was the only name, right?
Okay. That's the only one, isn't it? So we're not going to close the public hearing. We'll leave it open. Darren will be back on August 6th. John will not be here on August 6th.
John will be here, I mean.
You won't be here. Michael will be here. So, you know, all summer we've had problems and I'm sure the public has the same problems, which is why I'm going to give them more time to come in and make some comments on August 6th.
Michael, anything now? Do you have anything now? Michael, do you have anything now?
Speak now or forever or whatever.
No, I'll just kind of reiterate an original question. I don't know how many meetings or weeks ago it was, but my initial thinking was I don't like to tear buildings down that are substantially rehabitable. And I asked the question, why, I believe David said that the village board with the neighbors came up with, this is what they wanted in terms of the number of bedrooms. And in order to get the bedrooms, it was like they had to take off this much. It's like if that's what the village board and the neighbors are happy with, then I am too.
See, I had to ask the question as I got the copies of the plans. Where did the number of 31 bedrooms come from? And if you look at the plans, it's four buildings with three bedrooms each, leaving 19, which is nine two-bedroom apartments and one one-bedroom affordable apartment in the building. That's where the 19 came from. But what John asked the same question I want to know the answer to. Where did the number come from, the 31 and for the four different septic systems and the fifth one behind the Oregon Center? Has an engineer looked at them? Has the Board of Health approved them? Are they big enough? Are they, you know?
So, so obviously some of the decision-making happened from the initiation of a proposal that was made by, obviously, Dutchess County. We then, and it was a much more dense project in the initial phases. And it was open to discussion and comment and thoughtful consideration and to some extent negotiation. And we produced that we have. Brian Hilton-Brandt, our civil engineer, has gone through the process of designing and calculating a septic system that will support the proposal. David Pearson from the Dutchess County Board of Health has been to the site and witnessed set tests of it. We do not have a Board of Health approval because I can't actually, I can't actually apply for that approval unless I have a subdivision. Like, I'm not going to be able to get that approval and hand that to anyone until I actually have a subdivision and they're just going to kick it back. So it's not exactly a chicken and egg, but we've taken the process as far as we can from a, a kind of feasibility analysis until we have a subdivision, at which point then I can finalize, you know, I can buck it up.
And a greater number of bedrooms would have allowed more flexibility in that. It would have made something like extending the sewer line, something that would have been cost you even more. But at this number, it's not.
So you just could come up with a subdivision as well and probably a site plan. We're trying to do this in three pieces, but there's a little overlap in all three pieces on it that we'll have to deal with. So.
One thing that was raised last, at the last meeting that I'm intrigued by is we're, by law, we're essentially stuck with 19 bedrooms for this building. But any configuration is somewhat up to a site plan approval.
Well, you're actually not. You're stuck with 31 bedrooms across the 1.48.
Yes.
You could put all 31 in the building.
Yes, I'm likely to do that.
No, I know. But the point is that you're not, the way the law is written, you're not stuck with 19, we're not stuck with 19 bedrooms in the building. We're stuck with 31 bedrooms across the property.
Right. But assuming three bedrooms for a single family house here.
But if we lost a single bedroom house or we lost two houses, we potentially take those six bedrooms of the building. And there would be, there are other.
But even if you have 19 bedrooms, you can distribute them in different ways. And when I reread the H, it's the BSO district, Berkeley Civil District. Again, it, the primary purpose is was to preserve the historic building and to provide additional housing for the building, which is in the purpose statement. And there's also a thing, a section on affordability, which is a good thing. And it seems to me in the last meeting, the idea of having a slightly different mix of units was brought up as a possibility. And I would like to say that I would be in favor of having an additional unit and having more one bedrooms than two bedrooms. Right now, it's a heavy mix of two bedrooms with one single family or a single bedroom unit. And having, I think the mix was eight two-family and three one-family. As an alternative, an applicant would give one more unit, the villagers would give one more unit, and you would get three units that would be less expensive than the two-bedroom units. And it seems to me that would be consistent with the purposes of the district and it would still be consistent with the 19 bedrooms and the 31 or whatever it is overall. So I'd like to put that on the table as a possibility to think about.
Generally, I don't think the planning board has control for what's, how, how the units are configured on the interior, whether the one bedroom or the two bedroom. We're going inside the walls.
I know, but that's, you know, the whole mix of the building type.
Is that what the statement?
And the consistency with the H, the PSO district, the purposes of it, I think, gives us somewhat to differentiate. And it could be beneficial to the applicant as well as the village, you know, suggest.
Well, yeah.
I'm curious if there's actually a need for more two-bedroom, one-bedroom for the village.
I can attest to that.
Well, because children.
Two families from having apartments in the village, do families support a family structure? Two bedrooms, a couple and a child, if you have one family.
Yeah, but there's, there's more singles in this village than there are families. And so a lot of people who are, say, elderly and need to downsize their house to an apartment would find this to be an attractive option. If it was a one-bedroom apartment and they can afford it, it would be a real downsizing option. So the market can be all over the place. You can certainly market one, one-bedroom apartments.
I don't think there's any argument. You certainly can market one bedroom. I'm just saying, two bedrooms, my, this is just my opinion.
Yes.
Two-bedroom apartments, based on my experience here in the village, are much better suited to a ten. Where people looking for apartments, the one-bedrooms, I have, I have many more two-bedrooms than I have one-bedrooms. And the two-bedrooms, there's a line, there's a list, I'm sorry, a list of people looking for them because people have significant other, the kids may come over to stay, if they don't have pigs themselves, they have a pet. And, you know, just the two-bedroom offers a lot more opportunities to.
But I'm asking, I'm asking for you to at least consider a mix, a better mix. This is overweight on the two-bedroom, not on the one. I'm still given the idea of eight two-bedrooms and three one-bedrooms because I don't want to mess with your mix too much. But it seems to me that would be beneficial to the village and less expensive for the pool of applicants.
And segue to the next.
We can only make suggestions. Mix that would work inside a building.
I got that, David.
All of your friends. We can only make a suggestion to the applicants. Can't tell them the mixture that we want inside the structure. As long as there is enough septic capacity. For that structure.
I'm asking them to consider it.
I understand.
Put it good to the village again for the intent of being BSO district, that's right. I have more, but I don't know if you want to drag this out.
Well, honestly, I think, considering you have been here for the last three meetings, we've been cutting down on particular paths and starting to get comments, but at the moment, no.
And there is a possibility I won't be at the next meeting, unfortunately. I'm still working on trying to figure it out. So. Let me just say a few things. The entrance door, I too find having the entrance door in the back of the building to be objectionable. I think it's inconsistent with the village. It points towards parking rather than streets and sidewalks. I think it violates the intent of the law as adopted. And it even goes against the principles in the residential district, which calls for entrance and space in the street. Now, I don't agree with the idea of putting a new entrance on the Bulbury Street side of the building. That's the most historic facade. It's the one that's most intact. And putting something in the middle of that would be too big of an intrusion on the historic quality of the building. And I think that's hard. Our mandate is to maintain the historic wall of the building. But I would suggest that you could put a building entrance on the south side of that building, where the existing entrance is, and create a entrance feature there that faces with the door facing Bulbury Street. So it'd be recessed, secondary to the historic facade, but it's still in face of the front of the property and wouldn't be hidden in the back behind the ramp. This would conceal the ramp and. This would conceal the ramp and would also give it a face on this corner in South Street, which I think gives the building more weight. So, I, I think, site plan, that's sort of my primary problem with the proposal, as The building is too much hardscaped on the front side of the building and on the sides visual from the street. It's almost all hardscaped. It's paved on one side, the driveway is, it's, you know, flag-stoned out on the south side of the building. The front grass has been removed and sitting benches and there's not enough landscaping and trees and greenery and the feeling of open space around the front of that property. All the open space is collected in the back corner of the building, behind the parking lot, where it's not really that attractive or usable. And so, I'm suggesting that a better mix of landscaping and trees, in particular, be affordable on the driveway side, on the entrance side, and even in the front, where all that paved and sitting area is. And I, I think, when we get to the subdivision part of the process, we suggest, and as a board, that the village board allow buildings down to seven thousand square feet, or in the initial, eight thousand square feet. And eight thousand square foot lots really butt up against this building and don't give it any breathing room or any green space around it, any opportunity for sort of visibility of the, of the, of the historic building. I think it's, it's unfortunate. And by just shaving off a few feet on each of those lots, I think you can give more green space around the scale of the building, the big building on the parcel, more breathing room and more sense of landscape setting. So, I'm suggesting, instead of having eighty-two-foot lots on the northern lots, you have like seventy-eight or even eighty-foot widths, so that driveway on the north side has a buffer, more of a green space, where you could put a row of trees along the driveway. The lots on the South Street side could be limited to, you know, something narrower width, so that you could have a corner green space on the Mulberry-South Street corner that would angle up to where that entrance door could be, so that you would have that sort of green sitting area in front of the building that you would be able to mix between the neighbors and the residents, rather than then sort of squeezing this sort of sitting spot in front of the building. It just seems to me that the whole site needs more landscaping and more open space around the main building. You can still have, my calculations, you can still have usable lots, village-scale, that have room for septic and a decent-sized house without having eight thousand square foot lots. And I did a look at parcel access. Something like forty percent of the houses along the north side of South Street are under eight thousand square feet. So, it's not atypical on the lot. I even went in and checked how many were gable-end and how many were side-end towards the street. It's a total mix. There's houses that are set back to, you know, the south side of the street. There's small lots, there's big lots, there's wide lots. So, I think you could have a mix of housing lot sizes between seven and eight thousand, probably between seven hundred and eight thousand, that would still fit comfortably those house lots and the house sizes that you've talked about, the septic areas, and still leave more room around the brick building in the middle.
We're talking about this when we get to the next item.
You're already in the next slide. You're, you're already.
We're just talking about it.
What's the next item?
Subdivision.
Oh, I mean...
We all talked about that.
Okay. So, I'll just, we're already in the next item, I'll finish my, my, my list here.
John, I just got a question for you, because in the last meeting, I pretty much, I think I might have said, similar to what you just said, these two, so for example, here's Mulberry Street.
Yes.
These two lots, as you pointed out, are basically eighty feet wide.
Eighty-two.
Eighty, eighty, yeah.
What if I had eighty, ninety, eighty-two, something like that?
This is over seventy-nine hundred, it's over seventy-nine hundred. I suggested, that's what you thought last meeting, especially since this is so tight here. If you were to shave five feet off of each of these lots, there would still be over seven thousand four hundred feet each, and you would be afforded that buffer for landscaping here, which is a very tight area. I think this is one of the areas you mentioned, John.
Yes.
Really tight and hardscaped. So, my suggestion stands that if you take five feet off of each one of these, you still have, you still have seventy-four, twenty-five minimum, right? But what I wanted to ask you, John, is you were saying a suggestion about this side?
Yes.
What was it? Bring this line back?
Yeah, if you may, say that top lot, lot number five.
Yes.
Much narrower and...
Oh, oh, bring this back.
Yes, and deeper.
Yeah. Okay, so bring this to here or bring this to here?
Right.
Okay, more of a square and less of a...
Right, and then brought that lot up as well.
Yeah.
You could have an angled green space that leads to the entrance on the south side of the building. It's a bit lately transparent. This is a...
When you say angled green space, what...
Have you looked on page forty-five in the comprehensive plan?
Actually, look on the handout that I provided.
Yes.
What was in the comprehensive plan, or my sketch, representing the intent, didn't actually, wasn't measured out. So, what I did, I took that intent and I laid it out on the survey and tried, what, seven thousand square foot lots, minimum for the PSO, for lots four and five, and left what, and then whatever's left over, give that more green space, right? So, I took this intent.
Yes, I saw that.
Right, and so, the handout is taking that intent and modifying it for the PSO.
Yes, but it, it, certainly they don't have to have seven thousand square foot lots.
You can have less.
You can, you can have more, but I'm suggesting something more like seventy-five or seventy-seven hundred.
More like that. It would be missed corners than having the nineteen bedroom entrance. Different.
This is, this is page forty-five of the beginning of the plan.
I don't know, I'm suggesting more like that. But that, remember, just to be clear, I did that sketch. I did it probably a year and a half ago.
Which sketch?
Yes, both those sketches.
Okay.
As part of the comprehensive plan process, before you probably had submitted any detailed drawings. We did brainstorming on what could happen on that lot, and those sketches were put together. And this is a revised version of that, and there were some earlier versions of it. Once we got more septic information in terms of the size of the septic that's required, we had to modify it. And I, you know, the latest version, based on the septic things that I've gotten in this last application, would make that probably a smaller space, but you could still have a space on the corner that is, that provides green space and a window of the street towards the building, rather than just a face-on look, so that you get a three-dimensional feel of that historic building. That's the idea, is to provide green space, usable green space in the front of the building rather than only in the far back of the building. And I was talking about something in the seventy, seven hundred square foot range, because I know septic is tight, you know, you don't want to overly restrict the house, you saw the lot, the house to footprints. But, so the green space would likely be smaller than what's shown in here, but it still could happen, which I'm suggesting. And so, I think the idea of at least reconfiguring those eight thousand plus square foot lots as they're currently configured should be at least on the table where we go for the subdivision things.
Yes. We'll go to the next item without...
We are in the subdivision.
Okay, so, the other point I'll make just before I finish, is that the current drawings have very large footprint houses, which distorts, I think, the available size of those lots. When I scaled out these footprints of the buildings, if you're assuming they're twenty-eight hundred, they're a two-story, they're twenty-eight hundred square feet, which is a very large house. And at least what I heard on the tape, you were envisioning more like eighteen hundred square foot houses.
Twenty-three hundred square foot, if you're...
Okay, I heard eighteen hundred, but twenty-three hundred square foot. But even with that, these are very big house perimeters, and then you have these sort of, I don't know what they are, exterior decks or, also shown on there. So, it gives a distorted picture, I believe, of how much, how large those lots are. And I would like them, you're showing a twenty-three hundred square foot house, and you're showing a twenty-three hundred square foot house.
If you're listening and have not quite understand the house, the front of the house surely could change.
Yes.
But it was primarily a two-story, eighteen hundred square foot house, and then a single-story four hundred plus minus sort of wood, or kitchen dining, kind of, that would be single-story and it would be out there. It's a configuration that is not inefficient. It could perhaps be more efficient.
Yes.
But it's, it's very common and very conceptual, and I don't think we want just the blocks, which would probably be the most efficient and be the most reasonable. So, somehow that has to be some variation of this, but we're also not proposing a house.
Or you're showing the exact same, you're showing the exact same configuration of a house, with all four lots, just reoriented in different directions.
So, this is where I...
And all the same size, and what I'm suggesting, the concept should show that the planning board is looking for variability in the size of the house, individual, size of the house, some smaller, some bigger, some variation. Now, I understand all this is conceptual, and so the house lots are sewn, and the, but the way it's shown now, I think, is a distorted view that there's, these lots are smaller than they actually are, because the house footprint and the extended decks are more than would be adjusted.
Maybe it would be better just to remove the house.
What?
Maybe it would be the better idea, just to remove the house. Is that what you're saying, Marty? That would be determined by what provides the box.
You have four architects coming in with designs of forty different houses to have control.
Yeah, we have, we have control over the concept plan, which is what we're proposing. And to me, our concept should be, these shouldn't be gigantic twenty-eight hundred square foot houses with expansive decks that limit the size of the parcel. I think we should...
John, there is no concept plan for septic. It's just out of the lot, right?
I know the actual subdivision, but we're going to approve a concept plan that's going to show...
The way, there's site plan approval only over the bump of these four houses. And then, the other approval would be the subdivision, which is just going to happen by the time it's approval, we just have the line up.
By the time it's approved.
The boxes right now, they're just to prove out that the lots are developable, they can be septic, it's going to have open space requirements, and have a viable home.
Yes, so what I'm suggesting is, I would like to see more viability in the home. These all look oversized, and I don't want to give the impression that these are the sort of houses that we're going to approve two years down the line, when somebody comes up with a house.
We'll just take them off then, because I don't want to, we don't want to spend, I mean, there's a time and money and effort, I think, to design hypothetical houses and so. As long as we have lots that were, which we're showing you, you know...
In order to figure out if reduced lots work, we're going to have to show configurations of houses on the...
Well, I think we can do the exercise with the lot that you're asking, but I think ultimately, the house sizes are just to prove out that the lots are, not to discuss.
Now, my question, which you go back to the septic system, if the lots are reduced in size, is that going to reduce the size of the septic system?
Those septic are based on bedrooms.
And lose a bedroom. You don't have enough septic because the lot's smaller to lose the third bedroom. That's why I said we don't have these calculations. I don't know, I have no...
These septic are drawn based on soil, to accommodate three-bedroom rooms. They're not approved yet, but they are designed for three-bedroom rooms. So, if we shrink it too much, so that a septic can't fit, that size, you know, is going to...
That's what else, or you would have to just argue.
But I think, on the discussion of having a mix of size of houses, so in other words, we don't want to, in the middle of the block is a giant building, so the block is hardscaped then, and in the future, when we have more houses there, there aren't, you can pick them out, you know, you can pick, well, there's a big house right there, but if you walk down South Street, for example, or walk down past the Four Sisters on Market Street, they're not large houses, right? So, the subdivision, which is the topic here, the size of the lots will govern, frankly, the size of the houses, the setbacks. So, if you were to show a proposal made with slightly smaller lot sizes or a different configuration of lot size, with the proof that you could fit three-bedroom septic on the smaller lots, I feel a lot more comfortable that we wouldn't be having mega mansions on the lots.
I think, these lots are already relative small, I mean, if you look at the lot configurations in the neighborhood, a lot's number longer, deeper, but this is within the mix, the division mix in the neighborhood, you know?
It's a little bit tricky, right? Because if you reduce the size of a lot to, let's say, whatever, minimum, seven thousand square...
We're not doing that.
Okay, but I'm just, for the sake of the study.
Oh, you're putting up a false argument. We're not asking for that.
No, but the point is, okay, seventy-five hundred square, okay. So, we reduce the size of the lot to seventy-five hundred square feet, we assume that the highest best value for that lot would be the PSO's would be better. We have thirty percent lot coverage, requirement, and we have ten-foot setbacks, and we have septic fields, not built on it, you have to pay to be, ten-foot setbacks, funding septic field. I'll get you the whole modified thing, Ryan, if you have it all.
Good, I know that.
It's, in all likelihood, the smaller you go with a lot, the less flexibility you're going to have with your house.
Yes.
Right? So, the smaller you go with a lot, logically, that means the less variability you're going to be affording a potential buyer in terms of house design and house configuration. So, if we're, if we're trying to promote variability, right, and different configurations, then reducing lot size, clearly, you're not suggesting a home, but sort of continue to reduce it, we'd be probably fighting against that. I would also, we're not, we're going to be reducing, right now, the houses as proposed are well under the twenty-six, the seven percent of lot coverage. As you reduce your lot size, you're going to be increasing, you're going to be bumping up right against that, the return of lot coverage, you're going to have less of the landscaping, you're going to have less of the space, you're going to have less green.
Right, you have different green area because the, the whole parcel is going to stay the same.
You're going to have less green there for that, because you're going to have greater lot coverage with your house.
So, I'm just looking at a new house on Mulberry, which would be like this, a brand-new house in the historic district, maybe on three floors, because the lot was narrowed, and that's going to make it even larger, but it's allowed because it's something to heighten it. So, we don't want that, so...
Right, the more you push it there, the more expansion it becomes, it's still the same size house, but with capability, just on smaller area.
What I'm suggesting is that I would like to see lot coverage analysis for houses that are on seventy-seven hundred square foot lots or seventy-eight hundred square foot lots, whatever you think.
Part of our handout from last meeting, I'll make sure we get it.
Part of our handout, if I ask you, I'll make sure you get it.
I had that handout, and I wasn't too.
One over by.
Yeah. And, you know, the piece, the other thing is, I think all the buildings, all four houses should show front porches.
Right, but again, the houses are not, the houses.
We don't get that, we're too propelled.
No, but if, if we're, if the front porches count towards coverage, anything with an overhead porch counts for coverage.
Well, I, I'm, I need clarity here, like this, in terms of what this board is charging. But I, not that I will meet whatever you want, I'm not, I'm not, but I'm unclear. In my understanding, that we have, we have proposed a proposed demolition, a proposed subdivision, and then ultimately, a proposed site plan, all of those four lots, lots, items involving site plan approval for individual, single-family, compliant lots are not part of this. But if they are, I need to know what I, what I'm not clear about.
What I'm suggesting is, if we have to have conceptual layouts on these lots to figure out what is a minimum size that can handle the sort of building that you're proposing, or that will be proposed.
I don't think we could that with the seven lots on the next of the agreement, sort of, we just had seven big lots, and then one, one of the time we came to build the house, and we had some concepts, and the houses built are totally different than the original concepts in the subdivision.
But we had concepts, I don't know, we had concepts. So just to show that the septic will work, just back with the sewer system, just to show the septic would work, and you could fit in 2,300 square foot house with a two-car garage and a septic system, and still meet the coverage of setbacks and have a front porch, that's all I'm asking.
But that's those boxes.
And we will deal with that. My, my only question.
Those lots, you know, with over scaled buildings and larger than necessary lots.
But that was a piece of. It's not, what I asked you.
Well, for an 8,000-plus square foot, we're asking for an analysis that shows smaller lots, so that we can have more, that's what I'm asking for, so we can have more green space around the building, the building. And in order to do that, we have to shave some of these lots, and then we have to determine whether they're still feasible at 7,700 square feet or 7,800 square feet. And all I'm asking for is, you know, a, a more variable look at these lots individually, so that it enhances the main property as well.
I think the reason why, in the Oakley School, Overlake District, the, the criteria was specifically included to, for the planning board, to allow a minimum of 2,000. In fact, the code, the Oakley School, Overlake District code says, unlike all of the rest of the village, minimum size, 7,000, and that was for a reason. That was because a lot of people came out during the two-and-a-half-year process of the comprehensive plan review, creation review, that they didn't want a lot of large lots, they wanted this, you know, coverage mega mansions, and things that are on two large lots. So in the current plan that you propose for subdivisions, Lot 4 is over 8,500 square feet, Lot 5 is over 8,500 square feet. And Lots 1 and 2 are 7,900 square feet. There's a reason, there's a big difference between 8,000 and 7,000. We're not saying you have to make these lots 7,000 square feet, but you need to respect the process and the voice of the community that says they want smaller lots with more of, you know, houses that fit in with the neighborhood a little better. The two that I was suggesting would only bring those 8,000, 7,900 square foot lots down to 7,425 square feet, right? And John's proposal for the other two lots still would bring them down, not to 7,000, but well above 7,000. That's what we're talking about, and your question as to what, what the planning board, you know, needs to do, we need to respect that, and that's why specifically that item in the DSOD was specified beside the boundary, is my opinion.
And it was at our request, yes, planning board.
Okay. But I, I think, we're certainly gonna get to a public hearing on this next time, just start a public hearing on this project. In my opinion, the applicant has entered a plan, and if, if it's, you're making a suggestion that the lot should be smaller to gain lot, because we need, we need to define what we want to gain, to what driveway to be able to give them, what green space.
I want the driveway to be bigger, I want it to be better landscaped.
We need to define why we want more, a couple of feet, extra feet from the property, and I, you know, I know it poses problems, but I, I like the house to be on the corner. I don't, I don't like, you know, the house should be on the corner, the corners of, the corners of Oakley Street, I don't like to hear how to like the yard, you know, an open yard, you can put, you know, players, but, and you have to provide a lot of screening for the lot, this is not the floor.
Screening is easy, but, you know, there, there are variances in the building. You can look at the lot on the corner of South Street and South Mar Street, that has a big front yard. That lot right across the street, from across the Oakley Street is a vacant lot, or at least a large open area, the church is set back from the street, you know, and it has a yard in front of it. It's not, it's not determined that every corner has to have a lot, all in the corner, a house on the corner. I agree, and that's one of the reasons I wanted the front porch shown on these, it's concepts, because one of the things in the DSO requirement is that certain houses should face certain ways on the street, and without that front porch on the plans, the people who buy that lot might have disceptions about where their orientation has to be. We want the house to face the corner lot, the lot.
Right, but these houses are not, the person who buys them is never gonna see these conceptual, because all that's gonna get filed is a plat and a house.
Yes, but the planning board will have all the, on record, how we came up with that lot line.
When they come in.
And that, and that would be part of the record, and so people would know it, and we wouldn't, we would have objective standards to say, and you don't expect to be able to get away with putting your porch on, you know, Oakley Street.
I think, right, I think it's, it's made into the box, since the entrance has to be out of south.
Right, and that's why I'd like.
You've got two entrances on South Street, and two entrances on Oakley Street, facing the street, which is facing the, Oakley and South Street, and that's something you'll need to apply. What's the absolute number of potential landscape for the house?
So the primary person, reason I would like to see smaller lots, there's two. One is that I don't wanna see mega mansions or alleyway buildings that are all big, I'd like to see some variability in houses that fit within the scale of the neighborhood. And two, I would like to see more green space around the brick building, again, visible green space from the street, some, a setting around that historic building, and right now, the proposal, from what I can see, is two alleyways on both sides of it, and all the benefit goes to the single-family lots rather than the multifamily lot. And I think people, the rent there should be part of the neighborhood, there should be some green welcoming space that's on the front side of that building, and the driveway should be squeezed. Right now, there's no sidewalk on that side of the building, there's like a two-and-a-half foot concrete strip instead of a five-foot sidewalk. There's no room for, no straight trees along the driveway, so that, you know, it's, it has that sort of setting that visually divides the single-family house from the multifamily driveway. All those things can be happened with a matter of shifting that lot line by four or five feet, is what I'm suggesting, and so by doing that, we can give that brick building, which is part of our site plan requirement, some breathing room by just making the subdivision a little bit more nuanced than it is right now, which involves sort of similar big-size lots with big-size houses.
I, I agree with what you said, John, and the last question you made about allowing more green space on the entrance is why I was suggesting just shave five feet off of both of these, and move this back here, move it back 10 feet, if we move it back from me to you, in distance.
Right, you could put a rail straight.
But it would, would allow, it would allow to break up that hardscaping here, and, and the landscape plan of the site plan for the new building would have to include that.
Especially because now number two is living on a driveway.
In the last, in its version, right, Jeff, I, I did move that one.
Okay.
From its previous one, so I heard you from the last meeting, and so that lot line has been moved, which is why Lots 1 and 2 are smaller. There's now, there's now seven feet of, of space, a planting strip of seven feet.
All right.
So, so you may want more, but I don't, I want you to know that I listened to you and we moved.
All right, this is a proposed research.
No, no, it is, there's a separate PDA lot analysis, David, is that, is that what?
Open up the previous one, you'll see.
Keep my.
Find a way.
Thank you. Fucking.
Oh, I got sweaty.
This one, actually, now. So if you go to the previous lot site, take me out from last planning board.
Not this one?
No, I thought, didn't you just hand this, just handed this in?
This is what we submitted for today.
Yeah.
Right?
That's what we.
That you relied on, what he had up on screen. I think they were looking, the previous one to see how it moved.
Yeah, go to the next page.
Okay.
That's a good start. I haven't seen that.
So, this, this is the one I was on a moment ago, so bear, bear with me, please, the previous one, okay, see that that lot line has shifted, has shifted to the north by four feet in order to get that seven type of plant.
You go up, you see the lot size is in the second, you're coming right.
Take it small.
And the last one is 12,000, 7,900. They were 8,300 each in the previous submission. So they've been reduced by.
I'm talking about to sheet now, right?
Yes.
So, in this sheet.
Lot 1 and 2.
Here's Lot 1 and 2. This is what I'm, my point was from the last, I was looking at this, Lot 1 and 2, there was a straight line here.
No, no, it was a job.
That was a job, and I got rid of that job.
Oh, this came out, not here?
Yes.
By two feet, I think.
By how much?
By not a great feet.
I was in fear of four feet to the north. And you now have six foot 10.
Okay, two feet, all right, I, I guess what I was asking is, do, go to 10, because still, this is, this ain't much, so this is my point, but still, so instead of both of these being like, you know, 80 feet, they could be 75, and that would move this back 10.
And you kind of look at, I just, just so you know, Lots 1 and 2 each have reduced by roughly 400 square feet each, and that line moved though, or approximately 3 feet to give it a six foot 10 planting strip in the north of, you can look at it more, but I just, you know.
So if this, all right, then if this document is correct, right, Lots 1 and 2 are still over 7,900 feet.
Yeah, they're right at 7,900.
Yeah, and I'm not saying take it down to 7,000, I'm suggesting take it down to 7,425, go by 10 more feet of landscaping that would have to be part of your apartment building site plan, right? So, and it, and I think it fits in with the point, and I've agreed with John, about smaller lots, 7,900, I changed features at 8,000 per lot.
Sorry, I don't, I don't think it's about a number, right? It's not, you don't know, and I don't know, if 74, under 75, 72, 73, like, it's not about a number, I think David's point is, like, what are we trying to achieve? What we're trying to achieve, legitimate, robust planning along the northern side of driveway.
Yes.
Then, and then let's understand what that requirement is, 7 feet is, 10 feet, 200 feet, not enough.
Okay, let me see.
And then, and then the lots will be with the lots on.
Okay, so on that, satisfied with that criteria, I'm suggesting 10 feet, so, so bring this back 10 feet, and give us.
10-foot buffer off of the driveway.
That would be a 16-foot planting strip.
Give us, give us a 10-foot thing here that you would include landscaping in on the site plan, right, and you will still have over 7,400 square feet, right? Now, you might not care about having these square feet, what I'm talking about now is the buffer. Give us another 10-foot buffer here to lessen the hardscape of that, of the, of the buildings on that.
How wide is the buffer right now? Six. So you want another 10, or a total of 10?
Yeah.
You're saying, you're saying this is 17?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and this one. That's 17 feet.
Go to 10, you need another three.
No, I'm saying, no, no.
Want a 17-foot one?
David is saying, David is saying this is 7 feet now.
Yeah, it is, I mean.
Because this line comes straight down here, I'm saying I would like to see another 10 feet here.
I don't think you need another 10 feet.
John, I disagree, 9 feet is 4 feet.
I think he's right, and you have to look at the purpose of it.
Yes.
Just not, could be, the purpose of it, as I see it, is.
He's over a little bit.
Enough proof for a row of street trees along that driveway.
Okay.
To create a buffer between the, the windows of the Oakley School and the single-family house to the north.
My response to that statement, we supported that theory, 7 feet is enough.
No, I'd say 10 feet is enough.
In the Development Standard Site Plan Review, T1, it says 10-foot wide privacy planting strip, if that's what they wrote in that.
That's in the back.
That's what it said.
But I think we can system.
A whole other area, okay? So we start on that, we'll talk about it at some point, but that's not.
Because you're saying, you're saying they only need, they would only need to reduce both of these lots by a total of 3 feet.
Uh, well, I, I wanted a sidewalk on the north side of the building, rather than people walking in the, in the driveway.
No, I, I would, John, just beg you to be specific. You know, now, I don't think we wanna, pedestrian law, where we drive, where we drive way on the other side, there'll be a walkway on the other side of the building, I think for obvious safety reasons, you want to separate those two, where your cars and your pedestrians are not in the same.
Well, people are gonna then walk in the driveway, yeah, because the bike racks are back there.
It's a civilian's right side.
The other side.
Bike, bike rack from that far corner.
The bike road, you can't, you can't on the other end.
I just want typically, with right there bike.
And if you're coming back to the village, and you wanna go to your parking lot and get your car, you're gonna walk down that driveway. I mean, right now, you have a two-and-a-half foot concrete strip along the side of the building, I'm suggesting it should be five, so people have a safe place to walk, to get back to the bike racks and the.
South side of the building.
Yes, and the main entrance will be on the south side, and then the main walkway will be on the south side, other ends will be on the south side.
The entrance is on the left side, I mean, sense how, the south side, you should have, that's where the side is a bit shorter, all enough to here, the sidewalk to nowhere, because then you have to walk around the whole parking lot to get to the entrance.
What if you're going to get your car, or going to get a bike, after bike racks?
I mean, I think it's weird to go from a lot to get a car. But we'll look at it later.
You're gonna add a little more space, you should add a sidewalk on the left side of the building, driveway to the right side of the building, pedestrians and the cars are safely, safely.
Never say we can cars, the village is all about mixing, and sidewalks are next to the street, that's the way people walk, they walk where they want to, and if you don't provide a sidewalk, they'll walk in the driveway. I would also reduce the size of the driveway to 18 feet instead of 19, but.
I am buying comment this other lots, and so I expanded it to accommodate my volume.
You had it at 18?
I had it, yeah, and they required it, right, now, because they required two-way driveway.
Two-way, 18 feet is an open driveway.
By a lot.
It rains, John.
Oh, we, we have the actual final say on these two things, make a make, rent a day shots.
So, so I, look, I mean, that, that's fine, and I'm happy to reduce the length of the driveway and add that to the planting and the sidewalk, and.
Yeah, anyway, I, this is that mix of that northern side, you know, I think it should be a sidewalk, a narrower driveway, and a wider planting strip. And out of that, you would have to lose maybe three feet off each of those lots. Which I make is still consistent with having a separate system in a large enough house.
But just so I understand something, for you maybe clarify, does the planning board have that, like, if I, we do that, do then tie along, come back and say, it has to be twenty feet, that's what, that's what.
I'll have a discussion.
Like, I.
My concern is that.
That I'm ping ponging around.
We should, we should pull the EAF, because the secret for new was done on the specific. So we want to look at what the NDA says about the access. Make sure that this is properly integrated into it.
I'm, I'm glad it's time to get back there, reviewing it with our department. They're not planning on doing that, but they'll be playing a file from there.
That's good, because they normally require twenty feet. And so if they're not going back there, then you can make, I mean, if you go to the green book, the standard green book, that says two-way travel, two-way residential streets can be eighteen feet.
Like, again, as long as.
So I'm not an engineer, I hired an engineer, paid them, but my friend, my patient, who paid me twenty feet. I, I, I'm not going to.
I'm going to have a discussion, but I don't know.
You talk to them.
I will, okay.
Okay, so I think we, we heard, heard everything about the.
Okay.
But we only heard two opinions on whether or not this idea on the corner, it's a good idea, and there were different opinions. And when we talked about this in the last meeting, the segmentary support decided that the rhythm of the street really required a building there on the corner, close to the park, but it was, it would be odd to have just a space on the corner. But, you know, so this is why we provided this scenario to look at how this street went out in that most of the corners.
Any doubt?
I mean, the church does it.
There used to be a house there a hundred years ago.
But, so I just want to know what the other board members don't, because it's.
But again, we have four today and four next week, maybe three next week. We won't be able to vote on this until today or late today.
I'm just saying, you're just in a frustration with any of the opinions.
I, my opinion is I want a house on the corner. I think that's what I.
I'll give you one on the front corner and one on the back, how's that, it's a compromise.
Well, there, there.
You can see how, if you put a house on that corner, because of the way the angle of the south street is, that, that limits the ability to, provide any green space on the south side of the building, and what I'm proposing is, and even their proposing, is the south side of the building is the main entrance. Why would you want to squeeze that where you, you know, you can't even see the entrance and skin behind a ramp and a, a long end of a long alleyway?
Why can't you move lots like you did with the north side, which brought four and five, move that back a lot, run down a little bit to the south street? Give a wider opening, tree line, except that you're going to, and do the same thing with the other side.
Because the way the angle of South Street comes in, you start getting narrower and narrower, that's not very useful space on the corner. You don't have a house with yard be empty, for instance. You have a house, it's all in the corner, and then it's, the yard is on the other side of the driveway.
Problem is that the South Street side goes all the way back, the, um, Mulder Street is locked in by another property. Lots are squeezed down, it's sort of a big issue. So, I don't know. I would like to hear your input from the public. Yes, I'd like to schedule a Scotty Public hearing on the sixth of August, and let's hear what the neighbors think for this.
Okay.
Where, where, you know, more people are here.
Chairman? The applicant, the applicant, I'm like, I'm like, can we push a vote in public hearings for the second meeting?
We don't have a second meeting or a second. Whatever that is.
Number second.
Change, tonight's public hearing is just for the certificate of demo, not the subdivision, that's not how it was added, added to the ballot.
Right.
Unless I made a mistake, I was, yeah, September third.
Okay, no, we're going to stick with October sixth.
So I agree, state my question, make the motion.
Yes, I make the motion, schedule a public hearing on the subdivision. Which is going to deal with the whole thing, not just since August, or, or August six, August sixth. We have a second? Also.
I would hope that that probably will be more than one meeting.
Well, we'll have that as two meetings too.
Yeah, so that other people can attend if they can.
Yes, I would feel it's six, but other people who may be able to approve that, which is, I don't know, August sixth, I, I would be proud of that.
Was, was the application sent to county?
It's already been sent to county, and we've not. No response.
We contacted them?
The full submission package will be sent, it's, we, it's almost been voted, four weeks.
Okay.
What was that submission?
I mean, August sixth.
No, everything was sent.
All of them?
All of them, what was in, what the binded one was, and the full second.
Okay, would you mind continuing to get it, to share it with me? Thank you. Okay, so we have a hearing on the sixth, um.
Two public hearings on the sixth.
Three.
Three, because we're doing, uh, the side of the street too, well.
Is it possible for me to ask the question about, can you filter it?
Sure.
Your colleague or Jack, you had on, um, a, a, another.
You speak a little louder.
Yeah, you know what?
Sorry, noise.
Hold it up where we can hear you.
Thank you, sorry.
Say it without the F.
Just a question about this show here.
Yes.
And I know that, I can't read what that says.
Says existing chain link fence, plus minus forty-five hectare, removal and making subject to site plan. So I'm just saying, that's what's there. And what, and what we do with it is subject to site plan.
So that will be discussed during the.
Phase three?
No.
Site.
Oh, what's next? We're doing subjective.
So I'm saying we're not going to demo that until we decide what's going to go.
Great, thank you.
When I, when we took a tour of the property, I love that the old back of the property has, you know, ten feet of weeds, vines and everything. It's great, because it really was screened the neighbors, but we haven't figured out how to do that with new, uh, greeneries.
Uh, just so you know, it's, chain link fence is not allowed in historic district. So I would suggest that as part of site plan, that all the site, chain link fence on that property will end up being.
Down the hall, though.
Down the, yeah.
We needed that all for me.
And then the BSO district. Did David once said?
No, you don't need it, I, I'll have been through a little fence.
No, it's, you're saying chain link is allowed in the BSO district?
No.
But.
Not the existing chain.
The, it says, the, the chain link fence shall be, the planning board may require such fence to be along the side and there, applying that.
Well, that's, if it's not allowed in the historic district, I'd be fine to take it up.
I'm not objecting to it, I just want to get, but that was a large discussion.
Yes, go ahead, Jackson. It'll be here the next year, hopefully, um, what else?
So, I, we only, again, we still only have clarity from two of the numbers, um, the quarter lot, but just want to be clear that you're not looking for anything new. From the public hearing, you want to get comments on what's proposed before we decide on.
Right.
I, I could reach out to Darren and see if he has anything wrapped, drafted, if he does, I can forward that along with you guys, as, as well as if, if Mike, between now and that time, drafts any questions, concerns, subdivision-wise, I can send those along as well.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure you're not expecting another submission, and get comments on this before.
I was just saying, so, which I know we have a public hearing. Look at something, never like, where I hit, what looks like here? We only have three board members. That's why I really want to make decisions. Very, when everybody's here. Think about it. Right, Dr. Fox.
Well, we've already talked a lot about the themes about smaller lots than the defined, and I agree, there's no sense in inter, don't group. Three or four iterations, we're going to start the public hearing at the next meeting on subdivision. People will have their opinions to add to what we've heard tonight, and we can have some more discussion, and then, and then there'll be, on your side, a decision on what you want to do about it.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just thank you, just hold on, whoever's going to lead, lead.
Talking the law, yes.
Talk in the hallway.
Yes. Paul, come on back.
Both likers.
I know, you're taking a lot of time.
Next time, I'll get it. Do you guys still do the online YouTube, record this as a live streaming or not?
Live, I mean, that.
No, we're not live streaming, recording it, and we're not sure how the recording is going to sound, just had a lot, do a lot of work to get the, uh, the air conditioner out of there, but we'll be dead without it, so, yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
The first agenda item was.
Chain block.
Chain block, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Saw mannequins in the window, so I kept, so we might be thinking that one.
Were there mannequins in there?
I don't know.
Today?
No, no, and, and you have pictures. The two.
Oh. It's a must-see back.
We found mannequins in the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the record, that's, uh, Larson, Larson Architecture.
Clothing, or you're stealing mannequins.
No, definitely, uh, definitely a clothing store. Um, this, this particular applicant is taking, um, moving from a retail use to another retail use, from, uh, houses at W, which was home goods and design services, I guess, to, uh, basically clothing and, um, this is a company that I think is based in Brooklyn, so it's a New York company that was kind of moving towards. I think they have, uh, a shop in Dover, I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Um, it's pretty, uh, it's pretty, the application is pretty straightforward. Um, according to Piper, uh, landlord, owner, um, they allowed them nine square feet, they're only using a portion of that amount.
Taking a look from Montgomery Road sign.
Yeah, they took, uh, she wanted to take that down, it was just with the boardroom sign there and the application for another projecting sign, just, everybody knows, it's been out there for twenty years, everybody knows where they are, so it's, it's necessary. So, that's essentially it. There's raised dimensional letters above the awning, very similar to Pink Trail and some of the other tents over here. There's a projec, uh, like a light sign, a projecting sign.
Before we go on, listen. This table. Next one's side of the ladder is nine. Three point eight square feet, two point eight square feet, ten point three five square feet. Close. That can't be right.
Yeah, that's. Inches, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, they're all, they're all in inches, but when they convert it to square feet, then there must have been arithmetic mistakes here, no.
Jeff is our resident mathematician. Right, you got it.
If you ignore the, uh, sign application, which I didn't do, I believe there is a, there's a picture, there's a chart, um, at the last page, that I believe is, is correct.
On this document?
I, keep going, Mark. Yeah, right there.
Okay.
That should be the correct amount. Three, you see the bottom, it's point three five.
Okay.
Yeah. It's twelve and a half inches, not twelve point five feet.
Okay.
If you go up over it, we can see the sign.
Okay, so would be worth correcting that.
Yeah, I can, I can send that over to nine, and I can.
Alright, um, and here's how the signs look.
Down all the other signs, oops. One on the front. You protect, I see the mannequins.
So the one on the front is going above the awning here. Uh, that's this one, it just says McLaughlin. Jay McLaughlin, not David McLaughlin Clothing.
No.
No, that's the mannequin. That is what I said, it's just the mannequin.
Jeff, that's not it. Jeff, how many signs have I brought to you that just have no description of what they do?
This is much better.
I know, that's very good.
That's what the storefront windows are for.
Okay.
To show the merchandise.
Alright, so.
It's a national brand, so, a nationally recognizable brand, based in New York.
So in addition to the flat sign that's above this awning in the front, you've got this hanging.
Yeah, it's positioned further down the building, under the overhang, the, uh, that's why I. Show it on the elevation.
And, um, okay, it's going to go four feet out from the building.
Is there some light, standard lighting on that building? This one doesn't have any light. They were not, there was a proposal for lighting, and the, the proposed lighting by the architect did not fit what was already proved, so it's, there's no lighting on.
So here's the, uh, this is the wall sign above the awning.
Yep.
This is the sign that projects out.
Yep.
And this is going in the door. And what goes in the door is this, right here, probably this.
That is a tiny, that is a tiny little, um, logo that goes on the entry door.
So that's the door decal.
That's it.
Yeah. Okay. It's, uh, not lit, it's sufficiently above the, um, you've got ten point eight and a half inches above the sidewalk, the lower border sign. I'm good.
I mean, you want to make a.
Motion?
Yes, uh, by motion, uh, we approve the, uh, sign for McLaughlin.
Second that.
Those in favor?
An updated form.
An updated form correcting the calculations.
That'll, that'll be in your inbox tomorrow morning.
Paul is in favor.
Thank you. Avlon Brooks.
Yeah, I think, uh, Avlon's been in that space for twenty-eight years, something like that, long-term client of, uh, the original Montgomery Road, it's all. We're essentially, um, if you read through this, essentially there is a, um, a south facing, the sign over the main entry to the right of the awning. Um, is an older wood sign, plastic letters on it. The overall, the broad perimeter around it, it's, ends up being twenty-four inches high by a hundred and forty-one inches wide. Um, if you look at the signage application, um, this particular location, because it has, um, a frontage facing, uh, Montgomery Street, and then also a frontage facing Livingston, uh, it's thirty-eight square feet, is what they have available to them, per the layout. And so we're, we're essentially replacing the older signs at the same square footage with newer signs that have a updated branding.
Same lighting?
Yeah, the lights will not change, um, they're, I believe they're functional, I can ask Piper's, um, um, Jeff from, uh, Montgomery Road, just check those and make sure.
So here's a sign that's going to be on the side of the building, so that you see it when you're driving through the back parking lot.
Correct.
Is that, is this a replacement or is this?
No, no, so, so, so this is, this is a sign that is existing.
Yeah.
Um, the tenant, when you're driving through, it's faded, it's not really a great, um, opportunity for drawing people in and. And one of the reasons is because that predates a steel fence that went all the way out into the building, all the way along the property line, all the way out to Montgomery Road, or Montgomery Street. And they feel it's more valuable to take that sign and its associated square footage and limit it to the Livingston Street side. So you'll see that size sign positioned over the awning, I believe on the next page, where it kind of coordinates back one, back two actually, back two part of the next one, right there. So they're gonna take that sign and make a new version of it and put it over that awning so it has some symmetry. And that is an actual awning off of, or entrance off of Livingston Street, that awning that people can access. So they thought it looked better and was more visible there. The only option for a person who's in that parking lot would be to walk along what is the exit driveway, which isn't the best way to have a pedestrian in there trying to get to the store. So they thought this was both safer and I think it looks better. And there's parking there, so.
So the idea then is to take this existing older sign?
Yep, remove it.
Off of there and use that allocated area.
You got it.
Put this new one above the awning on the opposite side.
Wouldn't it be nice if you suggested to the owner of the landlord, buy a can of red paint? The sign looks gorgeous.
Now, glad you brought that up, David, because we've already had that discussion. And they had some repointing that needed to be done after the building was painted, so they are planning on regaining it. I didn't want my sign to go on a building that, you know, had been painted, you know, the history. Well, I offered to paint it for her, but she said she had somebody coming.
And of course, I'd like to have Ablon Books.
If you'd like to help, you can come over and help, we'll do it together.
I already painted the pool hat a couple of years ago.
There's a little, there's a little bit more to, just to go over here. I know it's been, I know it's been a long night, we all wanna get out of here, but I just wanted to, so this is the older logo on a delivery only door. The way that they did this is they put the vinyl lettering on the backside of the glass and then they put windows in there. I can't take it off without destroying the window tint. So what we're trying to do is just do a smaller decal that only just covers up that text in the same color as the signs. It just says Ablon Delivery Only and then basically sends customers to the next address, which is, you know.
It's a directional sign.
It's a directional sign. I know it's less than two square feet, but we put it into the square inch total anyway, I know it's, I just thought it would be, I just wanted documented.
So John makes motions, still live.
Yeah, I made a motion, I'll second it.
Michael, try.
Michael, try.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're having a discussion about a pre-submission.
15 minutes.
My name's Natalie Quinn, I'm with KRC Pain Consultants, based in Gipsy. And as the chair mentioned, we're working with the owners, Nikki and Dimitri of Smokey Rock Barbecue, for an additional building on their site, so thank you. We have a question to walk through, or I can do it by the access.
Hold on, Natalie.
Thank you. The bottom one, number three. All right, so the next slide, so parcel is 0.77 acres. There is the existing structure on site that houses the existing restaurant. Parcel is in the Village Center District. And go to the next slide. So this is, you know, very beginning basic concept plan. We've just been working mostly with civil engineer right now, have not gotten into architecture or anything. But the property owner came to us wanting to add residential units to the property. He has some children who may wanna live, and his wife are thinking about downsizing. So they were thinking units for them and then potentially units for renting out as well. So the concept right now is four one-bedroom units. They made it one bedrooms, they made these studios. Right now, the size, as the civil engineer has sketched it out, is around 500 to 516 square feet of living space. They are two-story, as currently considered. The ground floor is a parking space, a garage parking space. And stairs kind of take you up to the living space. And there's also a, if you go down a little bit, you can kind of see floor plans for the bottom left-hand corner. Again, done by our engineer right now, right there. So you kind of see what the living spaces are looking like, or the intent. And so in addition to that new structure in the rear with four residential units, camped building, there's also reorganization of the parking facility.
We asked the enforcement of the civil determination, okay.
Stay cool enough in here for the rest of the day. I shot that?
We could probably turn that off.
I'll talk quickly before it gets, before it gets too hot in here then.
So the three-page determination, this was having apartments, accessory apartments in the business district in a building that wasn't in the building, like putting apartments upstairs.
Exactly. The intent is there for residential units, the intent is there for mixed use, the intent is there for apartments in the downtown and multifamily in Village Core. We just weren't quite sure how this fit within the Village's zoning code, so we submitted it for a use determination.
The three-page letter ends up by saying that it's a determination that it's by special permit, it's committed to the Lloyd's saying it is.
As multifamily, right, not apartments in, yeah, so I love.
As a multifamily, yes.
Yes. So that does change apartment or apartment.
Blessing that this is allowed. And then we have to start what you wanted to do because we had, it's a tricky spot. There's a big drop-off there, and we've done studies.
Wetland back there.
The bog turtles back there that almost stopped the spa from happening, you know, and you know, this stuff fall over, it's gonna be cold.
Yes.
So, you know, I guess it's gotta be engineering and figure out what the weight of the building, the weight of the car inside the building. I'll park that on that cliff and go, he's got a lot of work to do.
So looking at the concept, where the new structures are proposed is largely where there is surface parking right now. So this is an area, right, that is already kind of currently impervious. I believe there's seven.
Seven.
Yes, seven spaces lost in the rear area, and that's why we've reconfigured the parking kind of in the center of the parcel to add, we added six spaces there. So in total, there's a gain of three spaces on site, right? So I think how you could think about that though is because we're assigning one space to each unit, there's kind of a loss of one space for the commercial rest, right, is how I, is how I would think about that. Because we are gaining net three spaces here. Just by reconfiguring and losing that rear, the rear patio is no longer utilized for dining. They're, the restaurants only currently using the front dining space, outdoor dining space. So that back kind of patio was no longer really being used except for storage, so we kind of reconfigured it.
They used to have a smoke back there, but they still do that, or is that getting relocated?
That, I think that that is going to, it's still kind of in the area there, so it'll be at the rear restaurants still. We'll note that on the site, the intention is to keep that, they still need to smoke their needs. So that is, I will.
They'll be somewhere there.
So we'll keep them to smoke every time. We'll just continue through the plan, I think, or through the proposal.
I'm sorry, you're saying that three, one space is lost to the restaurant during the reconfiguration?
Yeah, so what we're getting is a net gain of three parking spaces on site, right? But four of those spaces are tucked under the, four of those spaces are tucked under the new proposed residential units. And if we're only getting a net gain of three, and four of them are kind of now assigned to these residential units, the commercial space, the commercial space is down one.
Four spaces because the garages are considered parking.
Correct, correct. There's a one-car garage for each of the, for each of the structures. I did just wanna walk through, we can go to the, just the last slide and then I think we can move back up. I did just wanna walk through, we did look at different alternatives for citing these, these units, right? Whether it could be an addition on the existing building. Sorry, keep going, it's a CAD draw, you're just gonna see the sketch, one of these lists in here. Right, so we were looking at different areas of locating the building. That smaller pink one where your marker is right now, we looked at possibly trying to do an addition there. Because the, the access, there is an access point, the ADA accessibility to the restaurant is in the rear, right there where that pink square is. That space wasn't large enough to meet a number of units that made this pencil out. The gap you see between those two pink squares is a utility line running through the site, as well as kind of the southern portion is also a utility piece. So this site is pretty continued, in addition to what the chair pointed out in terms of the wetlands in the rear, this is also crossed by municipal lines with easements. So that also kind of restricts where, where development could happen on the site or the addition, right? And our engineer has been in contact with, with water and sewer to talk about additional connection, right? Because as it would be a second structure, it would be a new connection rather than kind of a increasingly existing connection. So they haven't, they are aware of that, they didn't identify any major issues to start, but we will continue that conversation as these drawings go forward. And then with one side, we did take a first stab at going through kind of the zoning regulations. So the project is, you know, in terms of like what would limit the density here with max lot coverage, we are well under the max lot coverage that is permitted. Setbacks, we are meeting the required setbacks, with the exception of the existing front yard, right? There's no change to the front yard setback, but I did just wanna note that that is, if you're not counting that in front yard dining space, this building is setback a little bit further than traditional. And then down at the very bottom is where you see kind of the calculation from parking. 15 spaces existing on site, on the concept plan, there's 18 spaces, so you're gaining three spaces, but we're adding four units, so that's why it's a little bit.
So you just came in to discuss the concept.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You just wanna discuss the concept now, like.
Yeah, I.
You have to submit a site plan, we have the public hearing, the special permit, you have to go through the whole thing.
There's the whole process, but I've sat on many of these boards and I've sat before many of these boards, so it's always good to come and have the conversation and try and get your comments ahead of time so we can incorporate them as much as possible with the design.
Our whole chair is here for August, August 6th. Their hope is to be here for August 6th and start the process at that time.
Well, we want more housing. Studio or one bedroom, one of the houses that we want back in the Village Center. Village Center does have, you know, most of the business district has apartments above it. Business district really is a residential district as well. And this actually would be private apartments to be facing spa.
Yeah, not wetland to kind of act as that.
For standing with the bog turtle.
Yes.
What does the board feel about this? This looks sensible? My slight concerns at this point, just kind of seeing where it is, from the existing dumpster going back, it looks like it's only 25, 30 feet, and then it looks like it tends to go off. And then where that building is, there's two large depressions where, I don't know what's going on in the ground, but I would like that kind of engineer to say, you know, when you're building right to the edge of a, of a drop-off, you wanna make sure that you don't find any surprises. The weight of the building, the weight of a 3,000-pound car, you know, it's gonna be a weight, you know, building on top of the car.
That area is probably all filled. And I would bet that it's could fill when it was done, because it was just for a parking lot.
Yes.
So they probably just pulled those, a bunch of tree stumps and who knows what back there.
The other concern that I see from the plan is that the dumpster for a restaurant is right next to the living, above it.
You mean this one?
Yep.
Yeah, dumpster, and most dumpsters, for some business, you know, it's not food. A restaurant, like, in 100-degree heat, it's gonna give up a lot of odor.
And talking about, there's garbage and recycling. So if these are individual units, where would the garbage and recycling be accounted for?
What does that mean?
To support each unit. And now, you know, I guess this gets into a little more detail of the layout, but where is stairs? How do you get up on the second floor?
Um, go down.
Yeah, you go down to the, again, we have to have the, we want, we'll bring an architect on board to actually, at this point, we were just kind of writing the concept.
An office, staircase behind the garage, and then there's an office and deck. So I technically sit down, see? So there's a staircase behind the park, an office, and then upstairs, and then you've got a deck and a living space. And the staircase is right between the park and the.
Oh, I see. So does that mean the only way, you have to open the garage door to get into your apartment? You fill exterior doors?
That's what it would look like.
Yeah, I mean, because of the tightness of this, I think you would, you would go, but again, I think we can talk, I, I think an individual door for each of these units, separate from the garage, may be difficult, but that's something we can have the architect look into as we delve deeper into this.
It might not be seen by someone with good means of egress.
No, no. If there's a fire and somebody's on the second floor, they're panicking and you're running down, and there's a failure, a power failure, the garage door is not, opener is not gonna work. And they don't know.
You can jump off the deck, you can show.
Right.
I know, it's, there's a lot of space behind us, it doesn't start going down for quite, you know.
Yeah, we'll show that better.
It might be some soil sampling or shovel something and then you put something down, maybe some steel or something, right?
So there's enough space behind here, just underneath the deck, there's the door in the other order that you can get in.
Sure to go down the line, hang on, what, literally to get.
Certainly on, on the left-hand unit, you can switch the parking over one, you know, four or five feet, and create a door on one side.
Yeah.
I'm not so sure on the other ones, but you might be able to.
Yeah, yeah, it might be possible on the exterior, on the two outside units, but we'll have to get creative and think about something for the middle unit. So it would be a fun task.
And you have to be careful having a car underneath the residence, like tubes and things to get up, something. No good staircase, right, and you gotta seal things up.
Everything do that all the time, you type people.
With the reconfiguration of the parking area, right now, as these arrows show, you come in this way and you go out that way. When you reconfigured this, is there enough for a fire engine or an emergency vehicle that you're turning radius? That an emergency vehicle could get around here?
Yeah, I will have the engineer show that.
Yeah.
We'll show a turning.
Okay.
Might never have to get a fire truck in there, because you have access close enough to it from the parking lot.
With the back parking lot.
But if we could reach out to the fire department, is there someone who could send me, like what vehicle they usually like to see used for, for turning rate? Yeah, we can talk to the fire department.
Maybe a ladder truck. I'm thinking more of an ambulance, which is probably going to work.
Is there a, is there a fire truck there?
Yeah.
Post, post B or post and ram, yeah.
Is that what we're trying to say?
Yes, or go through the fence.
This water line easement here?
Yeah, the water line and things run, run through that.
There's a big, uh, is that this?
No, that's the rainier from the wet.
Yeah.
From the wet? Okay.
So if you go to the, the CAD drawings where you can see the easement's better.
Okay, there's a sewer line and then there's water lines that run down, um.
Yeah, we're crisscrossed here. Yeah, so there you can see the red, the red one at the bottom is water.
Up here?
Yep.
Yeah.
And so we're trying, yeah.
So there, these are the easement stuff for this line here.
Yep. And then there's the one that cuts between the two pink boxes, which is sewer.
Sewer.
Sewer line that goes through there too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
The name sewer.
So it's always a tricky. So, um, speaking of sewer, is something that's, that these units are going to connect to have sewer, village sewer?
That would be assumption and.
Um, and did you confirm capacity or whatever they want you to do?
I got twenty.
Before you connect?
Yeah, well, we started the conversation, I think, yeah, and we'll continue that conversation. But like I said, the engineer reached out to Water and Sewer initially to talk about four additional one bedroom units and capacity. And there was no red flags thrown up, but we'll get official correspondence as soon as.
I can't imagine there'd be a problem.
Yeah.
But it was just, uh, it's a step to go.
I think they, during the comp plan, they determined they could have up to twelve, let her more bedrooms.
Yeah, I mean, the grasscar was going to do it. They were going to increase the capacity by putting in a gigantic poop tank. Yeah. And what it would be is it would store stuff up and then when everybody's asleep, it would process the excess and empty it out. And by morning, it'd be ready to overflow again. So you could double the capacity or something of a sewer system by having a storage tank to store, you know, during the day when everybody's at work, and now when everybody's sleeping, and double the capacity. Then the grasscar could have, but now we know we can do that.
Now, two things that I had, is that a D E C wetland in the back?
We need to get, we have a wetlands guy who's going to get out there and there's, there's question about jurisdiction and current boundaries. So we will do wetlands boundaries.
I didn't realize it was a hundred foot buffer off that wetland. I thought it was a long one.
We drew it just in case so we could work with that, right, assuming, but we would do, whether it's Army Board or D E C.
Because we went through that with the spa.
I, our state engineering firm helped with the spa with Mayor Bo, so we'll, but we want to.
We have the knowledge and have that, how, what you think of that.
Yeah.
It's only twenty-two foot aisle between the garages and the planning, whatever that is, a curb line. And we typically want twenty-four to back out of the garage. So either you're going to have to move buildings back a hair or you have to recess the garage doors a couple feet to make up for that, I think, because you don't want people packing up or not being able to get into their garages. That's already going to be tight. Did you think about a three-story building rather than a two-story building? So that you would have a more respectable apartment. And it would look, I think, better because having a one, two-story building where one of it is a garage door, I think is going to look like a shed in the back.
Yeah.
Whereas if you had two stories above it, you would get more rented space, more agility in five hundred feet is a pretty small unit.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was the intent of kind of not, they're not quite micro units, they're bigger than micro units, right? But for.
Height limits are, are not a problem, firstly.
No, it's forty feet.
Will be higher, so you could put living space on, on the second floor. For above, it could have a couple, two bedrooms.
Both are limited by, I guess it's a question about parking here, right? Because when we got changed from apartments to multifamily, now there's a two space per unit requirement. Where before, I think as an apartment, there was only a one space requirement.
Yeah.
So now, you know, we're going to be having to ask for bearings and things like that. So I think we're trying to balance the parking provision, uh, with living space. I'll talk to the.
A two level apartment would still probably avoid that.
Yeah, I'll talk to, I, the, the goal here was to make affordable apartments, um, that look nice, right? So I think we started with two story as like the basic outline, but I think we can definitely, I'll definitely talk to the team about.
I think it would, would make a big difference if you had the garage over recessed a little bit in a exterior, the, the astute type tomorrow without four children or whatever.
Yeah.
So that it, it, you know, instead of looking like, what's it called, like, you know, commonly there was this house. It's all cracked garage door frontage. Uh, that's what I would, now this is in the back of a lot facing the parking lot, so I don't have a problem with it and I, I think. In fact, with the comprehensive plan, we did a conceptual design for this whole section.
Okay.
Which shows the building in the back of this property.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yes, um, so we actually created, um, a South Garden Street. And we'd come in between the bank and the barbecue and reach over and connect up to Garden Street so you'd have a whole new block in the village. So you might not want to look yet. It's not approved yet, so it's unofficial, but it's, it's all the village board has been approved by the committee, it's in their lap.
On the village website, just to clarify a word that you used. You said, "We want to provide affordable housing."
Naturally occurring affordable housing, meaning smaller.
This is free market housing.
Yes.
This is not state or federally governed affordable housing units.
Yes, that's not the intent right now, yeah, free market, but smaller. Yeah, but it's, yeah, exactly, smaller sized units that are naturally more affordable than larger.
And it would be helpful for people working the restaurant, family members, or like that, which might get better rents than the normal people who'd be on a free market apartment, right?
Yeah.
So I think it's great to have worker housing on the site.
I do too, and it's a great use of this space and it provides four more dwellings for a dire need in the village. And you can walk everywhere from here.
Yeah.
With parking, no less, which is another problem. That works better or next place?
Just submit a site plan and get us.
They're going to take all the input tonight, apply, um, to a more formal submission. And the hope is they'll be back August sixth to formally start the process. And you guys can determine then, based on what you've heard, if you're on board to schedule the public hearing for the special use permit for one of the meetings in September. That's have to be September third, second meeting in September, whatever, whatever your preference is.
I will, I, I'm assuming though, I think it might, we'll probably have to push out a little bit just because I'm assuming you're going to want to see the architecturals as part of the submission before setting up the public hearing. So, so we wanted to have this step first.
And it's September third, then two weeks later.
Yeah, plus.
Oh, we're.
Public hearings in summer are not fun, you know, if it happens in fall, that's fine.
Because you saw how, how we're struggling with board members and with public.
Absolutely.
It's very difficult to do that, it's unfortunate, but that project was very legal in the, in the summer.
Yeah, I think, uh, the property owners here want, they do want to move forward, but they're not, there's not a huge pressure on them. You know, they're doing this themselves, so all, we definitely will be back, um, soon, but we want to.
We like the concepts of.
Great, thank you so much, it's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. We have a couple of minutes, uh, Darren and Jim, part time? Do you know what numbers they were?
Hold on, uh, five, seven, five, six. Okay, um, yes, um, this, these are the draft minutes from May seventh. I added my comments in red.
Yes, I'm happy.
And Darren's, so that you can see them, and they start soon, are in blue. Oh, they're underlying here in burgundy.
Looks different each time.
His blue, I know, his blue comes out of somebody's color.
Yeah, so you can see, for example, here, they, I just see one of these bars indicates that they're protected. This stuff has gone over the line and it's real hard to tell what that's burgundy or the first of them.
I'd like to appreciate your hard work, but you guys, some of you agree that these look good and, uh.
This is interesting, I hear his do show in blue. So the question is, um. Is, um, are there any questions for me, you guys?
You guys are very thorough.
Okay.
Always happy to just let you do it.
All right, motion to approve the, uh, Village of Bryant Beck Planning Board minutes, uh, Tuesday, May seventh, twenty twenty-four as amended.
On second.
All is in favor?
Aye. One more. Uh, the twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, it's twenty-first. Again, same thing here with Darren, Darren had a lot of comments on here, Darren's are in blue. Darren was very specific. My stuff is in red.
Make the motion again?
Make the motion to, uh, approve the Village of Bryant Beck Planning Board minutes of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four as amended.
On second. All is in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstain.
Oh, that's right.
Don't abstains.
Let's, let me know about.
I just found out about this conflict tonight, so I'm going to work on it and see what I can do.
Okay, so before we adjourn and move, I have two department referrals from the Building Department. And we'll try to make them as swift and simple, chair. Um, so this is from, uh, thirty-nine South Street. And I can pass the photos down, um, for each member to look at them. They currently have a front porch that just serves their front door. What they are proposing or requesting is to extend the porch, uh, the majority of the width of the front of the house. Um, and create a more full porch. Uh, what the Building Department wants to know is, does the planning board feel that based on the proposal, is this warranted for site plan review? Uh, and the other element to this is the house is already existing in the side yard setback. So it would appear that the new porch, once extended, extends into the side yard and therefore would it require an area of that?
It stands out much in.
Same historic?
Yes.
That's the government planning.
Yeah, I think we want to look at a front porch.
We want to look at it, but I, I like a front porch.
It's nice, but, you know.
Oh, very good.
Here's Jeff's, yeah, I like that, but they have to come to talk to us.
Yeah.
We've never, and we have, we have the. Yeah, yeah, and, and we have permission, we've done this, people, it's on that where, if it, if they're adding something that's following the line of what's already in the setback, you know, we have the discretion to say we're going to have to look for barriers. Especially for a porch, it's not even a building. I like they're adding a bed over the back.
I think we've always done a.
This is particular, this is a particular situation. These are, these are two close lots, um, especially the neighbor. Okay, how does that be passed down?
You need one, I don't think you can just save it. You have a good justification for it, but I don't think you can just sell it off.
Sure, um, so I have a second, second item, let's jab if you want. Okay, this is your neighbor.
Yes, it is, my next door neighbor. And I think the front of their house is in the same plane.
Oh, yes.
The same plane as the front of my house. We have a very wide porch, so.
Yes, like you said, tiny house with no drive, no, no driveway, no, nothing.
So you can squeeze a car between your house and.
And garbage, yes, it's, it's really tight.
Yeah, very.
That would look very nice.
And the house next to them on the other side. Wow, you thought you had a good house.
Really tight, tight.
Those are, those are the old.
You're living in the twenty. You're living in the mansion, that's your neighbors.
Those are the original twenty foot wide by thirty foot deep, eighteen, nineteen houses.
Yeah.
That were on that road.
So the next, the next item, seventeen Beach Streets. These folks are playing mini splits. Right now, um, they have one proposed option. I, I've been having a conversation with the heating and AC contractor today. He is going to do his level best to, uh, convince the property owners to move the convention to the rear of the property. If he is successful, um, does, do you guys want them to come before recycling?
I don't think, if you can't see up the street, I don't think we should.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we want.
Right.
So when they say they're moving into the rear, they're in the rear of the house, not in the rear within the side.
Not, correct, not within the side, because as this, this house had said, seventeen is very close to fifteen on the west side, John?
Seventeen would be on the east side.
So east side, the west side of their house, what is almost.
I don't know which house it is still. Is it close, true that they're close together, they're consecutive?
Yes.
That street, yeah, they're really tight together.
Yes, so if the contractor is successful, the board is comfortable with this proceeding through the Building Department, um, and things like that. If, if not, obviously there's variance.
Which one is it, is it the one on the right or the one?
Left, left.
Right, left, so. So yeah, if it's in the back, we don't see it, whatever.
Well, we can see it from somewhere, then I think you got to at least have a meeting.
Okay.
One, one thing is that the unit is in the back. The other thing is, as long as they put the unit in the back, if then they don't decide to run conduit, uh, line sets.
So that's the follow-up.
Eight foot up high across the whole building and up the front to get into the top, as long as they don't do that.
Contractor believes he can run all of the line sets through the basement.
Okay, then we're good.
All right, so one, one, one for one.
Ken and Justin are doing that.
Of course.
Asking our opinions, because that's good.
Well, we're trying to eliminate past.
Anything else I would have?
I have two things, I'll just do it quickly, I'll mention them, and you guys, you don't have to talk about them. The back end of, of the theater, they never did the landscaping, it really looks ugly. They got these two big giant cement walks that were supposed to be landscaping in a tree. And a sidewalk, as I remember it.
No, they were, they were in the site.
They were in the site.
Yeah.
So can we get Justin to?
We can have Justin review, I know, um, there's been some, like, Upstate has their vision. And then the management for Star Building and the owner has a different vision. So whether those two are colliding and there's friction, I don't know.
We have it approved.
We approved the plan, you know, who, whose property is the approved site plan?
For the entire building, so.
Star Building.
Star Building, yeah.
Okay, well.
So they've got to either do it or come back and say, we're going to do something else.
We, I can definitely have Justin, um, reach out to the management, uh, hopefully be back in New York. Going back and forth between New York and California the last six months.
So we are trying to have Nate make something a little pretty on Garden Street so it looks nice when you build a building. And you got this tremendous.
It really is a hole now, but everything else on Garden Street looks pretty good. And the second one is the house that's right up the street from me, thirty-three, I think it is Main Street. Where they are replacing everything with a house.
At the dollar.
Yeah, at the dollars. We let them replace the siding. And that nice board on the top, underneath the gable, is no longer there. And the vent through the attic, those are the only two that sort of would have been left in the restored building, are both gone now.
I think the other thing that Darren pointed out in the prior meeting is that they put little fur inscriptions. It took a long way, except for the bottom. Okay.
It's still there on the porch, but not around the. It's still there on the porch, but not around the porch roof. So at any rate, it seems like that vent and the, and the board should have been kept.
We have board, what about what, John?
There was a broad board underneath the gable end. At the top of the siding.
Certain, a little louver, like.
And then there was a little louver vent for the attic.
Yeah.
And both of those were nice, something that was left in the future.
I.
Nothing stuck.
We will reach out to Evan Dola, and I, he was receptive to removing that trend that Darren pointed out, that went around above. I know there was some back and forth between him and the current owners about what goes along the bottom, but it has been expressed in him.
He's left the bottom, but it also matches the rest of the house, which, so that's why.
It has been expressed in him that if he wants to keep it, he has to come back and get approval amended again.
Or we have to just talk to Darren and have him drop his objection.
Or, or that, yes.
Okay, that's it, John?
Yeah, I could bring more up, and I want to go see the, the All-Star game.
I just mentioned though, that, and thanks to Ryan for uploading the approved minutes to the website. So we approved six sets of minutes in the last three meetings, but if you look at the status, we're still missing three. I got including tonight.
I want to pay the board, but I do not want to do it while things are rolling.
Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye, thank you. Thank you.